You good to go? Okay. Six oh three PM, Wednesday, December fourth, 2019, in the Sunapee Middle High School Music Room. Uh, we're gonna get this board meeting rolling. First is Roll Call. Kelly, you wanna kick it off?
Good. Kelly Russell's Business Administrator.
Russell's superintendent.
Andy Nichols, School Board.
Jess Tattlet, School Board.
Scott Wismann, School Board.
Carrie McCaffrey, School Board.
Ed Anderson, School Board.
Lizzie Nigl, Student Rep.
Terry Gear, Director of Student Services.
Egan Reed, Assistant Principal, Sunapee Middle High School.
Sean Moynihan, Principal, Sunapee Middle High School.
Great, thank you. Can rise for respect.
The flag is in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I'm at the meetings, so we're gonna start with approval of meetings. Each needs a motion, second, and we'll go from there. First one, looking for a motion for minutes of the November sixth, two thousand nineteen, school board meeting. As written, I have a motion.
I have a motion for approving minutes of November sixth, two thousand nineteen, school board meeting.
Motion Ed, do you have a second for discussion?
I'll second.
Carrie, seconded. Comments, corrections? Lucky to have very good quality notes on a regular basis. I didn't see any. All in favor of approving the minutes from the November sixth, two thousand nineteen, school board meeting? Please say aye.
Aye.
Way helps the folks to watch and lots of schools to do. Uh, next up, looking for a motion for the minutes of November sixth, two thousand nineteen, school board budget work session.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Scott, thank you. You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ed. Comments, corrections? It's pretty straightforward. Nothing. Um, all in favor of approving the November sixth, two thousand nineteen, school board budget work session? Please say aye.
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 Uh, last up, minutes of the November twentieth, two thousand nineteen, capital improvements Subcommittee or the CIP meeting. Um, two of us on that, I'm gonna make a motion to approve these minutes as written. Looking at you, sir.
I'll second. Well, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of November twentieth, two thousand nineteen, CIP meeting.
Okay. Well, you made the motion, I'll second.
Good.
Got a little aggressive there. Um, again, good notes, and I didn't see anything needed to expand or correction. All in favor of accepting the minutes of the November twentieth CIP meeting? Please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Uh, gender review. I did not have any additions. Any, anything Russ or anyone else?
I have just two pieces. I'm gonna ask for an action item on the school board approving a mailer to be sent out to the community. So, I'll give you more information on that. I'm not giving too much approval of a mailer. And then, an information item, I was just handed. I'm gonna inform you about a boys' basketball trip that's gonna go.
Just for info.
Yes.
Evil, okay? Super. Anything else, anybody else? All right. I have a policy right in front of me. They're printed copies, if you have a spare.
Yes, sir.
All right. The public forum, policy B, BDH. Just wanna do a quick review of the policy after last board meeting, but this is gonna be a thing for all of us to do as a team. So, we have fifteen minutes set aside for public comment. Speakers get three minutes. And the three minutes in overall fifteen minute periods may be extended by a majority vote of the board in prior meetings. In the spirit of having a meeting conversation, I have proven to be a totally ineffective timer, so whether people have gone over or not hasn't been very clear. We probably, after some tension from the public, last time, we should do a better job with having the three-minute timing, so that we can utilize the policy to see if the board wants to extend that person's time. We're still working within the three minutes and fifteen minutes. Uh, and this is not a Q and A. This is a, we went through a lot of work over the last couple of years, at a great expense, with a lawyer, a lot of work with the ACLU, to be able to find two opportunities and sustain two opportunities in a school board meeting for the public to speak their mind. So, we encourage it. We went through a lot of work for it, and we hope to hear from the public. Uh, but this is a statement period, not a Q and A. I'm done. If anyone would like to speak in a loud voice, we'd love to hear it. If not, there's an opportunity at the end of the meeting. No motion? Everyone's sitting incredibly still, so I'm gonna say that we will hopefully hear from you later in the meeting. Uh, we're gonna move on to the presentation from the National Honor Society. Um, Ms. Carter and students, do you wanna, do you need us for presenting?
Where would you like us to present?
Come on now!
So, Skylar is our president of the National Honor Society. So, she's in her second year with us. Um, and I'm just gonna talk about who's eligible to be on the National Honor Society, how they're selected, and then Skylar's gonna do all the wonderful talking about the great things that the students have been up to and the things that they have planned for the remainder of the year. So, I don't wanna forget anything, so I've got some notes here. First of all, there are four pillars of the National Honor Society. The students need to demonstrate commitment to each of those four pillars to be selected as members. So, the first thing they need to do is demonstrate a commitment to scholarship, and they do that by maintaining an eighty-nine percent average. Once they do that, there's a list of students who are emailed with an invitation to apply for membership. At that point, in their application, they need to show dedication to community service, leadership, and character. They complete an application, and they write a statement about themselves, and they submit that to me, and it is then shared with the faculty council. The faculty council is five faculty members here at SMHS that are selected by Mr. Moynihan, because actually, the National Honor Society is the principal's organization. Um, there, then we have an induction in the fall each year. So, this year, our induction was on October twentieth, and shortly thereafter, we got up and running with our fundraisers. Uh, they have to complete twenty hours of community service during the school year, a minimum of one hour a month, but if you do the math, obviously, they need to do more than one hour per month to make that minimum at the end of the year. They're recognized at graduation by wearing honor cords, and they're given those honor cords on class day. And our past and present members, over the past two years, have logged a minimum, or at least four hundred hours of community service among all of our members. Uh, so we currently have six members in the National Honor Society, and those six members have helped with our fundraiser. We had a fundraiser recently, we did the mother-son dance, and we, we also do the father-daughter date night in the spring. Um, all the money that we raise goes towards the scholarships that the National Honor Society has, and also goes towards community service activities that we help out with. We also have ongoing service opportunities, so every week, we have homework help in the middle school, so members are required to go and help out middle schoolers with their homework in the morning. Uh, we also help out with babysitting during the SPTO meetings. And we also make informational or inspirational posters that are displayed up throughout the high school and the middle school. So, those are always fun to see. Um, and then, we also do several projects. Our most recent project was the gratitude project, and within this project, we collected post-its of what students were thankful for, and in the cafeteria, we wrote like, "Thanks" in the post-its, which was pretty awesome. Um, and we also collected a lot of food for the food pantry, um, and we made an informational video about hunger awareness, and we donated a hundred dollars to the Thanksgiving food baskets that the middle schoolers put together. Uh, coming up in the spring, members of the National Honor Society will also help run after-school clubs at the elementary school, and we hope to do another project soon. Students complete other individual service activities and help out community events like the Turkey Trot, the Empty Bowl Project, uh, the Haunted Harbor, but we have a variety of things that we do. Any questions?
Very busy.
Yes.
Really enjoy the father-son, my father-daughter dance. So, thank you very much for doing that. That's always a big highlight for Grace.
Just to also thank you, you guys have really stepped up in close with the forum, which is helping provide the decision that's really valuable, so thank you.
Thank you.
You know, that people say, and tell us that they wouldn't have been able to go if we hadn't helped out, so it's awesome. Appreciate it. Very active, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for presenting. We're gonna head over to Ms. Nichols to start us off with school updates. Student rep, please.
All right. So, yesterday, with our first day back to school after a school day, our day, so we had a nice little extended break. Sports are kinda getting started for the winter season. We had our basketball team, both of them, started before break, and then, they had scrimmages last night. Skiing, alpines started yesterday, and our Nordic team started today, so they're both kicking off, so it's been good seasons. In terms of other co-curriculars, our service club has organized a blood drive with the Red Cross, and they ended up collecting over thirty pints of blood. They also organized the Empty Bowl Project. That was on November twenty-first, which was a fundraiser for holiday food baskets for the food pantry, and the food has been bought, the bags have been filled, and will be delivered soon. National Honor Society, Skylar covered, they did the food pantry drive, which was successful. And in terms of drama and theater, they had a play that took place on Monday and Tuesday night before vacation. The first night had a turnout of over two hundred people from the community, which was really good. Student council, the high school held a dance last Friday before break, and they're now preparing for the winter workshops. Um, one of Mr. Coverdale's English classes has actually started a school newspaper that's called The Goose, which just came out again this week. And the ongoing problem that I mentioned last time with the network being down, the students have adjusted to that a lot lately, and have just used more school computers, over-personal computers, or set up hotspots, so everything's going pretty smoothly in terms of that. It's run pretty good lately. I mean, we haven't been back for two days since vacation, so...
Anything on the state championships?
State championship, the girls ended up winning, and the boys were runner-ups, so both two very, very successful seasons. It's never happened before. We both made it. Championship.
They're gonna add during your update. The, um, went to both games, and the, um, trying to think of a diplomatic way to say this. The behavior of Sunapee made my wife and I very proud. Where the behavior of the opposing team and some of the parents, not so much. Is that a fair way to say it?
That would be a fair way to put it.
No, it's definitely fair.
Yeah.
Different than the words in my head, so I just... It was really startling, but it was nice to be there and be like, you know, Sunapee's got this.
Yeah. We usually hold it together.
One or lose.
Thank you, Lizzie. To the elementary school. Miss Gear, please.
So, Ms. Gear's not here, unfortunately, I've got lots of prayers about her mom passing away over the...
Yeah, I wasn't sure. I thought you signaled, you were gonna fill in on that, sorry. Yeah, very sad, maybe this is for Jody's mom, very sad. Let's move on to the middle high school.
It's always fun listening to Lizzie. I have to go through my list and start crossing things off.
I'm starting sharing.
She, a lot of times, we're able to meet together, but she's on top of it, believe me, uh, which is good. Uh, so I'll try not to repeat, um, you know, when she had a lot, a lot going on. We had an empty bowl event as well, which was, which was very well-attended. DI team again is, uh, we have a team this year, a little smaller, but they're coming up with a podcast series called Why Care? It has three topics of discussion so far: blood donation, hunger, traditions. Our band students saw a performance by the UNH saxophone quartet. Honor roll field trip, you know, we started this a few years ago, where the guidance is really taking over, really doing something, at least offering an opportunity for all the students to make the honor roll. Um, it's much more attended by the middle school as opposed to the high school, but it's open to both, and they went to Dartmouth Football League. It was really cold. So, they left at halftime, and there was no complaints, I think, when they left at halftime. But it's just a nice, you know, it's nice that a lot of kids signed up for it. It's nice that we have staff members who chaperone it on a Saturday. It's nice that they get, you know, access to Dartmouth College and to see those things, so that was a really nice event. Uh, Mr. Coverdale with the Yodden Club took a group of nine students to Mount Musulaki. Um, you know, Mr. McDonald with the, uh, took the engineering students to New Hampshire Track Design, Pop School Bridge Competition. Today, we had students out for the Sound of Music at North Stage, so that was going on, and then, uh, 'cause that wasn't quite enough. Uh, next Saturday, we've got, I think, thirty-five students who are going to Broadway. Um, so we're gonna have three different, it was open to all the students. Uh, the, we used the parking revenue to rent a bus. Not a school bus, we take a charter bus. We actually, we'll leave at seven in the morning, go to a matinee in the afternoon, go to Rockefeller Center, and we will be back by midnight that night. So, it's a, it's a long, involved day. Uh, I actually do do that trip right now, but it's great just to see. Some kids have gone, and so excited to go again, and some kids have never been to New York City, and it'll be in the middle of Christmas time, so... That's what's going on right now. Busy, busy, busy.
Lots going on. And the thing that, just if people aren't familiar with the hike, 'cause I certainly wasn't before this year, that, um, when they go to Musulak, it's like a ten-mile hike.
Oh, yeah?
There's amazing pictures, and I don't think a lot of those kids, I understand, because a lot of those kids hadn't ever been exposed to anything like that before. So, pretty cool.
I say no to that chaperone. It sounds good, but they tell me how long it is. I go on the bus to Broadway.
It takes the Coverdale. So, but that's pretty dear to from the whole range of the different experiences, so the kids wanna do something that's pretty dramatic, ranging from Broadway to a ten-mile hike, uh, snow.
And I, and I really do think we have some kids who will do both of those, so, you know, they really get a wide range of things.
Super. Thank you. Uh, Superintendent, update, please.
Thank you. So, um, there's note that over the Vacation Chief Cahill, the Sunapee Forest Left Benevolent Association, uh, has donated some money to help improve safety from Sugar Gym, the crosswalk, and the selectmen approved that donation the other night. And so, what they'll be doing is putting in a yellow light, so that you could actually hit with poles, you could hit the button, it'll put the yellow light, stop traffic, so you can then cross safely across that very busy intersection. Anything that's great for our kids, for our community, just people going back and forth now between Dunkin' Donuts and Sugar Gym, it's a little secret, so... We thank Chief Selectmen in the Benevolent Society. We're getting a visit on Friday from Senator Hassan. Folks are aware, we had a little bit of a ransomware issue a couple of months ago, or a month ago. Senator Hassan, one of her, sort of pieces that she's been working on is a piece of legislation, a bipartisan legislation regarding cybersecurity. Uh, she has called myself, and she'll be meeting with myself and Mike, and just getting sort of our overview of how we handle this. She actually has reported back that she felt, of what she has heard, we've handled this really well, and maybe of somewhat of an exemplar of having secure backups, having things in place so that these things happen, you can get yourself backup and running. Obviously, there were some things that were lost, and there were some expenses, um, but to minimize some of the effects that these things are happening. And it's just nice to have the senator come up, pay a little attention to a little of Sunapee, what it is that we're doing, so we're, we're welcoming her Friday around eleven o'clock. Have to call for a snow day. Uh, and just a little bit, not to get into the process of snow days, um, but whenever possible, we try to call a snow day or delay the day before, and that's just really for the convenience of giving families the opportunity to set up a daycare or where things may need to be arranged for parents either to go to work or for siblings to, to take care. Um, we don't, I, I don't like to do that often because of the chance of, hey, it's, it's, all of a sudden, it's supposed to snow, and then it doesn't, or we don't get as much as we're supposed to. When we can do that, when I feel it's safe to do that, we, we, we do try to make those calls ahead of time to give that information out. We work real closely with the highway department. Given that this was our first snow, we wanted to make sure people took it slow, that's why we canceled them, but the second day, you have that delay, so people can get themselves unburied, it was gonna hit different parts of the state. Folks may, well, it didn't hit that bad here in Sunapee. We have teachers that come from all across the state, so folks had to travel over an hour to get here. And so, we have to think about all the people that are commuting, not just right here in our community, that are getting here and getting here safely. So, a little bit about snow days. I mentioned last time, the police department, the library, and, uh, school, the adjustment council are working on bringing the film ANX regarding student anxiety, and we'll see, we picked a date in February, be able to get that to you hopefully soon. And you heard about some of the great community service projects between the Empty Bowl, um, the holiday baskets that go out that our middle school kids and our service club provide. Just great opportunities for our little community to continue to get packed, and it's great that our school can be part-time.
Yeah, Mia Cahill did the cereal box last month, too.
Yep, the Halloween parade, she delivered that to the food night as well. Some real, real nice things when it comes to our, our sense of service in theater, in this, in this school community, so... And on top of all that, we continue to do great things in our, in our classrooms.
Yeah, we were able to go to the Empty Bowl first time. That's a really fun, it's a fun little party, you know, doing... Good, good, but, uh, the bowl, home, it's fun, great community event. Uh, thank you, sir. Run up action items. Need to approve, I need a motion to approve proposed list of SMHS extracurricular positions. I will not repeat my steep learning curve moment of reading the entire list like I did the first time I got one of these. It is a long list, if you're not all looking at it. So, I need a motion for the entirety in a second for discussion. Now, if she falls over the crowd, can somebody help me out here?
I will make a motion to approve the proposed list of SMHS extracurricular...
Back now. Do you have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, it's lengthy. If you would like a snapshot on how much our school provides for, um, co-curricular, it's pretty amazing, the range. But to me, to me, it's a really neat snapshot of how the day goes beyond the classroom. Any questions or comments? By a group tonight, sign. All in favor of approving the proposed list of SMHS extracurricular positions? Please say aye.
Aye.
Next up. Approve the signing of the proposed purchase and sales agreement for district sports fields. So, I need a motion...
Can I recommend a recommendation? Can I recommend that this goes to non-public under ninety-one eighty colon three, to the purchase of sale?
Yep. This can move. That reads, consideration of acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, which, if discussed in public, would likely benefit the party or parties whose interests are at first of those in the general community. This is used when things are in process, and it's a respectful, proper thing to do, so we'll bring that to non-public after, thank you for that. I had another...
Mailer.
Mailer, that's what it was.
Yep. So, one of the things that I, I think folks have realized with the building projects is our ability to communicate and to get this information to everyone. Um, and so, what I'd like to propose here is, working with John Reed and some other folks, we developed a very simple draft of a picture of the proposed project, um, with some information on the back, and really just trying to drive people to our website to find information. This would go up to the twenty-one-hundred PO boxes of folks that get mailed within this community. Uh, the price to do this is twelve hundred and thirty-four dollars. Um, so, I would just ask for some approval. Again, this is the draft that I'd be happy to take if people want other things added. It's not asking people to vote any one which way or another, it's just really driving people to our website and giving them some diagrams of what the proposal looks like, as well as, um, some benefits and dates of upcoming meetings on that. And it would be about that side, not the piece of paper side, but the actual, where the graphics are. The, that picture would have to be amended based upon our action item that we just tabled for non-public. We don't plan on sending this out to around December eleventh, so I don't need your feedback tonight. I just need your permission to go ahead and start the process to get everything ready to go.
Twelve hundred dollars?
For twelve hundred, twelve hundred and thirty-four dollars and ten cents.
So, that's printing and postage?
Printing and postage. For twenty-one-hundred and nine people, for mailboxes.
I'll make a motion to approve twelve hundred and thirty-four dollars and ten cents for flyers to go out to the students of Sunapee. I'll second Ed's motion. And Scott, um, seconded for discussion, even though we were obviously starting discussing before the motion. Any other questions, comments? Again, draft, concept, not final. I think it's good, just, um, I'd love to see, learn more, the red, I'm not sure, whatever color you're gonna do, learn more WWSS, you, you fact out on both sides.
Sure.
So, wherever it lands, you learn that there's a website. And that's plenty of time to, another week to find two minutes. I think it's a good idea to make sure everybody's aware of the effort. Anything else? All right. All in favor of approving Ed's motion? I just forgot the number. Twelve hundred and thirty-four dollars and ten cents for the mailer, fired all, all twenty-one-hundred. Uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Information items. Community forum review.
Just we have one coming up, if, if there's anything you want to talk about.
Yeah.
December eleventh, next Wednesday.
Yep.
So, we're working hard to, well, Russ has really worked hard to staff to revise the education specs a little bit more, streamline the school, trying to, trying to get, get it down to a point where it's as efficient as possible, right down to our needs. We're not, we're not, we're really not going for anything extra than needs right now. Same with the Fields Committee. The Fields Committee has really come to grips with, um, you know, the cost of everything, and that, we're really, we're really down now to the idea of exactly nothing more than needs. And, um, and they know that it worked, as long as the fields are in good shape and, um, they drain well, everything will work much better than it works right now, so they're all excited about that. But, just been really, really a lot of work to try to boil everything down and get it to a point where it's, it's palatable for the taxpayers, hopefully.
Yeah, so for people who have been there before, you'll see some significant work done for all the plans, and particularly the, the elementary school and for the fields. There, there's a very different look. There'll be updated pricing, which is trending in a favorable direction, but we won't get that until right before the form, so we can't speak to it tonight, but we're encouraged by the effort and focus leading us in a more positive direction cost-wise, and, yeah, there's a lot of work behind the scenes, staff, administration, um, subcommittees, all of that, so we're appreciative to everybody leaning in to try to make this work, so, whatever your stance is on the school or the project, the more people perform, come and learn, the better, and we'll have, you'll leave with insight as to the why and how the building will work, and the drivers for needs-based twenty-first century K-12 campus that the group is proposing, with the support of our consultants. So we hope to see a record, proud, next Wednesday. Uh, next up, basketball, field trip.
So just making you aware of a continuing field trip that we have, our boys basketball team has, uh, Christmas tournament down in Keene, they do one overnight, they've done this for several, several years now, and I just let you know that I am approving that because I asked you to go for a night when you have, or, boy, knowledge, the best to do with that, by policy.
Policy, policy, yep, okay. Got knowledge. We're moving on to manifests, if I can get one motion for the AP and send a different motion for the payroll manifest.
You should do it.
By process. If you get a motion for AP manifest twenty-twenty-dash-zero-nine, please.
I make a motion for AP manifest twenty-twenty-dash-zero-nine for two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-one dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Thank you, Ed, you got a good second?
Full second.
Carrie, I understand, I probably should use everybody's last names if you're formal, but I don't, so that's, that would do it. Um, any discussion question around it? Okay. All in favor of approving AP manifest twenty-twenty-dash-zero-nine for two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-one dollars and ninety-seven cents, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. A little more mouthful for the next one of you, payroll manifest, can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve payroll manifest twenty-twenty-dash-early three-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-twenty dollars and eleven cents, twenty-twenty-dash-zero-nine two-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars and fifty-nine cents, twenty-twenty-dash-zero-nine-point-one-six-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and seventeen cents, and twenty-twenty-dash-ten four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and forty-six cents.
Hopefully, sir, thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Carrie, I need to name you for the second, so now we're in discussion. Any, uh, questions just through non-public, if you're not, are used to it? These are the things that happen between the meetings, where we go, we read through, ask questions, sign, and that leads up to the next meeting, so these are the reflection of time at the SAU, um, between the meetings, lots, lots happens between meetings, meetings are these apart. Nothing more, all in favor of approving the payroll manifest as Ed stated, please say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That brings us around the horn to the segments of public forums. Ms. Dragonstein?
John Augustin. So on the, at the Forum on the eighteenth, I think it'd be helpful to talk a little bit about how the SAU building fits in to the new grant proposal, 'cause I don't, I walked away from the last one, not really understanding what the status of that building was, so, just a quick one, quick talk. Second, I would just suggest, or I'll, I'll use words, I suggest, that on your agendas for the meetings between the forum and the voting day, you include, uh, an agenda item for Q and A just specifically on that proposal, because I think there are people who can't attend on December eleventh, there are people who are not comfortable getting up to walk to a microphone in a big room, and that there will be a lot of questions in, in people's minds, and if you, if they understand that they could come to whatever meeting you're gonna have in December and January and February, and actually have a question and the answer, then I think that's beneficial, and at least they'll be informed on the vote and maybe even, uh, appreciative of their questions being answered, as opposed to not feeling like they have a way to get questions answered. And I think you put whatever guidelines, parameters, round of it you want, in terms of total time limit, time limit per person, has to be a question, can't be a rant, can't be a statement, things like that, but, but I think if you had an agenda item that was specifically Q and A on new school proposal, that it would be different than public forum, and it would allow some back and forth.
Just an example of why we have public comment, so thank you for speaking, sharing your suggestions. Other voices and edits? All right, here are none. We, we need to, we stated, um, so we need to go to, uh, non-public, I stated before, so I need a motion, um, to move us, this is for ninety-one dash A, three, two, D for consideration of acquisition and sale of lease.
Yep. Make a motion to move the board to non-public session to act upon matter or matters in reference in the following divisions of RSA ninety-one dash A three-eleven, consideration of acquisition or sale of lease of real estate property, which if discussed in public, would likely benefit a party or parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general community.
Thank you for the motion, so the way this works is it's, um, seconded by, what's that?
Is he the second?
Yeah. I was just looking at the roll call, will that come out?
I'll second.
Sorry, I just jumped ahead.
You do second, then roll call.
We have done one for a while. Mr. Scott, does the second, okay.
Roll call will go in.
Roll call will go in. Ed, we'll list them off as we go?
Yep.
Wanna say aye? Yes?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Can I say definitely, yes? All right. So we'll, we'll conclude and wrap it there, so thank you for coming out, any part of Mark City?